All right, so thank you everyone for joining us. This session is hosted by the MCLA Institute for the Arts and Humanities. We are a grant initiative funded by the Mellon Foundation. We are on campus and we work in service of the community to bring art and humanity resources together to advance our community's exploration of DEI. And so, to give you a quick introduction of who we are, we're going to show you this wonderful animation designed by our own students. Awesome, thank you. So Drew, I'm gonna hand it over to you.
Thank you Erica, so that's our team. I'm Drew Thomas, the graphic designer, and I'll be introducing the segments for today. So I guess we'll just get right into it. I'd like to thank each of our seven panelists for being here today. This is really great turnout. And on our panel today, we have Declan McDermott, Brianna Christie, Destiny Rivera, Ian Mosher, Kennedy Soban, Kurey Clark, and Lindsay Rosa. And now we'd like to give each of the panelists a moment to introduce themselves and talk about their art. So with that said, I'll let our panelists take it away, starting with Ian Mosher.
Good afternoon, I'm Ian Mosher. Thanks Drew for the introduction. Love the cartoon there, that's awesome. I'm a photographer, a sculptor, and an illustrator. I don't know if we want to do next slide for this kind of thing? Or, oh, I traditionally sculpt in some traditional mediums. But for my grant project, next slide, I decided to use some upcycled materials and trash to end in conjunction with the traditional sculpting materials to create some characters. Next slide. And they were designed to bring awareness of our overconsumption and how much pollution we're causing on the planet. Next slide. Next slide. And I think we have one more. Okay, and so it's just to raise awareness in a recycle, reuse, and upcycle, and to educate the community on how much waste we're producing, and maybe some alternatives, maybe use it for art or sculpture, that kind of thing. Or if you want me to say more about it.
Switch on to Brianna.
All right, hi everyone, I'm Brianna. I am an English Communications major, and I'm also the PR and social media manager for IAH. Before I became an internet IAH, I was introduced to the institute through their mini-grant program. So last year, I wrote a mini-grant for MCLA's Black Student Union, which I'm currently the president of, to go to get funding for like transportation to go to the National Museum of African American History and Culture in Washington DC. And so this grant was meant for like educational purposes, to include general members and also people in the campus community to learn more about African American history. But, you know, things happen. So currently, I'm working on a personal mini-grant project, which I'm planning on printing and publishing, writing, that I'm currently working on. So, fingers crossed.
Hi, my name is Destiny Rivera, and I'm a senior here at MCLA. I'm a double major in English and Arts Management, and I'm also the Community Engagement Associate for MCLA IAH and the Smart Commons blog. It's a long way to say that I'm very involved in the community. I was lucky enough to be accepted for two grants, one for the Empowered Voices Collective, and then one for Student Advisory Board. With the Empowered Voices Collective, also known as EVC for short, it's this online platform that celebrates students of color and alumni. I applied for the grant because although I enjoyed it being like an online platform, I wanted all these individuals to be able to have like a tangible copy of their work so they can be considered published artists. And then with Student Advisory Board, they're this board that helps us make sure IAH is reaching the needs of the students and faculty. But we noticed that we weren't getting as enough traction with it, so we decided to do a pop-up in order to get the people on campus to know not only who we are, but how they can get involved with us and how they can help us. And writing the grants allowed me to be able to hone in my writing skills. Thank you.
I'm Declan, I am also a two-time IAH grant recipient now. I started doing the grant process with IAH last year, last spring, even though the semesters have flown by now, so I don't actually know how long ago that was. But I did it with Nervosa. It was my first grant project ever. And so it was mainly about increasing visibility for people who struggle with eating disorders or body dysmorphic conditions. And so it was really important to me to kind of bring forward the voices and the stories of those I've heard in the past. So it gave me the opportunity to hire some students and friends of mine to work professionally on the project. And it really just gave me the budget that I needed to be able to make this idea come to fruition, to become a project that could make impact not only in the MCLA community, but on the surrounding Berkshires and larger community through social media and marketing. And now this current semester, my second project that I'm working with as a co-producer with Lindsay Rosa on, is the 24-Hour Theater Festival. And we earned three sub-grants for funding for that project, which is allowing us to provide opportunity for 13 student participants to engage in a 24-hour virtual theater festival where they can create their own devised theater. And it's gonna be a really great collaborative experience. If you want to go to the next slide Erica. I've really been able to see kind of the ripple effect and the impact of these grant opportunities. Like there was a lot of great reception, both within the community and outside the community from my first project with Nervosa. It allowed me to help students build their own portfolios, as well as my own, and also just create an industry standard of making sure people get compensated for their work, rather than asking my friends to do work for free just because it's a good portfolio piece. It allowed me to give them a great portfolio piece and also compensate them fairly, which was great. And the same thing goes for the second theater festival, or for the second project, which is the theater festival. It's allowing us to really hold ourselves to an industry standard and make sure that we are doing everything the way that we would in the real world if we had real funding. So it's a great kind of beta testing for what things are like in the real world. And you can go to the next slide Erica. And ultimately, it's really just given me a great opportunity to help build my own portfolio. So I think that grant opportunities are great opportunities to not only do that beta testing of the real world, but to start developing your own personal portfolio. So that is how I have engaged with the program.
Hi, my name is Kurey Clark. I'm from Queens, New York, and I teamed up with Kennedy Soban to do this grant project where we decided to highlight the nature in the Berkshires. Because as students who go to MCLA, you'd know that at certain times, you feel like there's not much to do, and you kind of end up sitting in your dorm withering at times. And I wanted to highlight the really, really beautiful nature around us. Like, the Berkshires is a very, very beautiful place, especially in the fall. And so me and Kennedy teamed up to put extraordinary things surrounded by nature. So we were planning to take shots around the Berkshires in several like ideal mountain spots, or trails, or parks that the Berkshires has to offer. And then edited those videos and photos together as a documentary, highlighting how like really beautiful the Berkshires can be if you decide to like, and like leave that bubble that you can sometimes put yourself in when you're in a new environment.
Hi, I'm Kennedy Soban. Yeah, I think that Kurey pretty much summed up everything that I was gonna say. But just to add on, Kurey had actually asked me to start this project with him, and I was really excited because, like he said, we often take for granted the beautiful scenery that surrounds us, and you know, we're stuck with work or college assignments. So, I don't know, I just think it's really awesome that we get to highlight and share with the rest of MCLA and the community things that they already should be paying attention to. But I know even myself included, I sometimes overlook the scenery, so.
We're gonna come back to this one. Unless you would like to play it now.
Definitely play it out, that's fine.
Cool, cool.
So, we finally got this out, some tools we need. This is the wig, it comes in like a shoebox.
Yeah, that's weird.
Yeah, they told us it was heavy and then they...
These are kind of different, but I think it's gonna look good, like.
I think if me and Kennedy knew what was going to happen in that short span of time, we might have done things differently, might have done things sooner. But it was impossible to predict what was going to happen. COVID had put everything on pause for us. It's taken a year off, not just our lives, but any art progress or grant submissions we had planned in that time. A lot of regret and sadness came with not being able to finish our project when we planned to. But we adjusted. If creating is therapy for you, when it comes to these very, very hard times, it's so important to maintain that, not for money, not for presentation, just creating things that helps you take your mind off the world for a few minutes. Things that you can be proud of. So, me and Kennedy found that it was really important throughout the entire quarantine to just keep creating, whether it related to specifically the grant project or not. But that the grant project, like the ideas we made together, aren't going to disappear, even if we wanted to do it a year ago or two years ago. We'll still have the opportunity to create through this incredible program. But we couldn't fester on the past for too long. And we couldn't like halt our art just because we were really upset at how we didn't get to finish a project that we put a lot of time into. But the world doesn't always work how you want it to, so we adjusted.
First off, I just want to applaud you two on that video, that was really great. Hi guys, my name is Lindsay Rosa. I am a senior in the Fine and Performing Arts Department, studying theater and arts management. I am a three-time grant receiver from MCLA, through MCLA Opportunities. In 2021, I received a mini-grant from the URC to produce a show called White Rabbit, Red Rabbit. And then in 2021, I have the Feig and Baum Scholars recipient for the future of nonprofits and creating a foundation for future entrepreneurs, which I just gave a presentation on this morning. And will actually be releasing a publication at the end of May detailing the overview of my research, thoughts that I had throughout the process, and resource list for future entrepreneurs looking to find a place to start. And then finally, just kind of echoing Declan, that I have, I'm co-producing the 24-Hour Theater Festival through the IAH mini-grant, so that was around a $3,000 grant that we will now kind of use to create a collaborative experience for 13 participants to participate in a 24-hour devising group. And then the show will be set, the show will be produced at the end of the 24 hours. So yeah.
Thank you Lindsay, and thank you everyone, that was really great. There's such a diverse range of projects we have. But now we have some questions. And because we have a lot of questions, to save time, we'll kind of be dividing the questions among the panelists, depending on how well it relates to their projects. The first question goes to everybody though, and I think it'll be, to make it less confusing, I think we'll just go in the same order that we just went in. So the first question is, what's your creative process like? I guess Ian Mosher, if you want to answer first.
Sure, typically when I'm doing some art, I kind of start with those historical monsters that everybody knows, like werewolf, vampire, goblin, ghoul, zombie. And then the art just kind of takes me in whatever direction it feels like going and evolves into. So, some of the pieces like from this grant project were from upcycled materials, and I took those and combined those with kind of goblin monster-looking faces. So, that's kind of how my process usually works. I don't usually have a clear ending point on it. It just ends up where it's gonna be, if that makes any sense.
Yeah. Okay, Brianna?
Yeah, I guess in terms of the mini-grant for the museum, I'd say that process came by like my Eboard and like general members of BSU, and seeing what they wanted to do and like how, you know, the outcome would benefit the community. In terms of the personal project that I'm working on, this is kind of sad, but I'm a cancer. When I'm sad, I write, you know, that's how my creative process goes. So I guess when I'm in like a good mood, that's a writer's block, like I can't write, but yeah.
Thank you, Destiny?
My creative process is usually utilizing whatever I'm passionate about. So with EVC and Student Advisory Board, I was really interested in amplifying student voices in like a creative manner. So I just focused on like how I would want my voice amplified, and I try to push that towards students, but try to meet their needs.
Thank you Declan.
Yeah, I think my creative process varies based on the type of project that I'm going on, but I very much do believe that my creative process really starts with the idea or with a feeling. With my first project, Nervosa, it very much was something that was, it stems from an idea and a feeling of just a lack of visibility or a lack of understanding of people who are struggling with these conditions. That is, in media particularly, but in general. And it was inspired by some projects I had seen friends doing about different topics, and some projects that I had like more professional, like films and stuff like that that I had seen. And I just really wanted to kind of sum that up into my own process with my friends. And because I am a theater maker, a lot of my creative process does also come from that collaborative aspect. So even if I do have these ideas on my own, I very rarely want to put them into action without having someone else by my side to work alongside me on it. Because I find that there is so much strength in varying opinions and in constantly kind of critiquing your own work. And I feel like you can't critique your own work in a bubble. And so I find it really, really beneficial to work alongside other people and to create those connections and grow with those connections as you're kind of building. And so that's how Lindsay and I started working together on the 24-Hour Theater Festival. I actually had produced it as just a class project, just as an idea, and created a budget for it. And Lindsay was the one who came up to me and was like, what if we actually did this for real? And so like, we really provided each other with the infrastructure to support each other to actually do this. So my creative process is very much through the collaborative aspect of working with the people that I trust and really enjoy working with to create the best project.
I like that a lot, thank you. Next, we have Kurey and Kennedy.
Me and Kennedy, we often bounce ideas off of each other because we kind of, like when it comes to creative efforts, we share the same brain. But I've noticed that like, a lot of my inspiration personally does come from movies or art that I've seen from my peers, because they create incredible work. Like honestly, Declan's creations have inspired me. Like working on Nervosa with him was like an incredible time. And it's something that honestly hit home for me too. So like, working on that inspired me and will continue to inspire me based on whatever I make in the future, whether I acknowledge it or not.
Thank you.
Um, my creative process, I do a lot of painting. I've recently gotten to other mediums, but I usually stick with painting. And I would say that my creative process is kind of random. And I usually just have an idea, like, there's a bunch of notes in like my Notes app, just like random words or things that I just have. Like if someone looked at it, they'd have no idea what any of it meant. But, and usually, I just kind of start, like I don't have a clear plan going into it. And I might start a painting and get halfway through it, and start again. And I'm like, wait, no, this is where I want to take it. And really just, projects really just evolve for me over time. And yeah, but like Kurey said, like we share a lot of the same ideas and I bounce a lot of my artistic ideas off of Kurey.
Thank you Lindsay Rosa.
Yeah, I actually had a professor who once said that if there aren't opportunities available, that you create them for yourself. And that's kind of, I think, where the basis of a lot of my projects come from. Is that somebody tells me that I can't do something, and inspires me to be, to want to do it. So that's, yeah, I think no matter what it is. Well, I read a lot of like self-help books and like inspirational things. So that also kind of fuels my drive in entrepreneurship to do those types of things. But yeah, just kind of somebody saying, oh, we don't have this, or you can't do this, really kind of drives me to want to push to actually make it happen.
Thank you, a lot of really good answers there. And I'm sure a lot of people can relate to those processes, so it's really good to hear that. But anyways, for question number two, I'd like to direct this question towards Destiny, Declan, Kurey, Kennedy, and Lindsay. The question is, how do you feel your projects have served in building community in the arts? Destiny?
I think a hope in serving to build a community is by just like letting other people on campus and alumni know like other individuals who are creating. Because even though there's like this whole amount of people who are doing all this good work, sometimes you don't know, because as Kurey said, sometimes you can get stuck in your own bubble. And I feel like EVC will help people find out like, oh, this name is familiar, I remember him from my class, or I remember her from this class, and they start connecting and it creates this whole network of artists.
Thank you, Declan?
Yeah, I think, I think with my first project, it was very much, Nervosa was very much driven towards creating community, not only in the community of people who are creating the work, but in the visibility that it was aiming for. It was really aiming to create visibility and empowerment for people who struggle with these conditions. And also to show that no one's alone, and that even people who might not realize it, or who might not be at a place where they're acknowledging it, could have these similar kind of ideas or struggles. And it's not as black and white as some people make it seem. And I also feel like there's like almost a beautification of it in the media. Like people can think of certain things as they're more, they're less real than they are. Like it's a mental health disease and disorder, and like there is an addiction aspect to it. And so there was, through that kind of message that I was trying to get across, there was a sense of creating community. Because people could really kind of realize that that is something that a lot of people struggle with, and they can get a sense of community from that. And then it also creates allyship in the people who don't experience that personally. From the 24-Hour Theater Festival, it was all about community for Lindsay and I. We were like, we both working, having worked professionally in theater, we were like, you know, we've experienced burnout, and we've experienced kind of this, like, do we even really want to do this anymore? Because you're just like, I don't want to work millions of hours for very little pay when like there's so little reward at the end of the day. And then we found that we had lost that reward of working alongside people and really enjoying ourselves, at least I had. And so that's what the whole project was based on. It was about really trying to re-establish that sense of fun and rewarding community that you can get from working with your collaborators without the pressure of trying to create something that is like fiscally rewarding in the end. Yeah.
Very well said, thank you. Kurey and Kennedy?
Um, so for us, I've noticed that, like when developing this, it's really beneficial to be able to give other, like Declan said, like give your friends and other students the opportunity to like, help with art and create art, and also be like financially compensated. And also, like, the communities in the art are so expansive and so wide. There's so many different kinds of people to meet and to work with and to collab with. And I don't know how, like what my life would be like if I didn't throw myself into photography and to videography and painting and all these different kinds of art forms, since I've met so many incredible people. And I hope that as, hopefully as my platform grows, or like I start to do more artwork, I'm able to help people who are in the position I was a few years ago, where I was just kind of making art in a bubble, and like I didn't know much people or have much connections and stuff like that.
I think our project overall just centers around building community. I mean, we're taking our surroundings and trying to expose the community to our surroundings more and get them to notice it. And I hope when people like view our final project, or video, or whatever it really ends up being in its final stage, I hope they appreciate and take away that, you know, the Berkshires are beautiful. And sometimes that, you know, you hear a lot of MCLA kids, myself included, saying like, oh, it's like, you know, it's boring. But I hope they see our project and they want to get outside and visit these places and create art based on our projects.
That's great, thank you. Lindsay?
Yeah, so I know for my first project, which was White Rabbit, Red Rabbit, which was a URC grant, that I was really kind of set on breaking the stigma of the typical theater experience. It was very much unlike anything that had been seen on stage before, because the actor received the script before they went on stage. And so I wanted people to attend the show, you know, with that, with that idea in mind that they're gonna be, that they don't really know what they're gonna be seeing. And so hopefully kind of expanding that, you know, they left thinking that theater can be something for me. It's not necessarily sitting down and not interacting with nobody. You know, in a typical theater experience, you walk into the show, you sit down, you get up during intermission, you sit back down again, and then you leave kind of without interacting with anybody else around you. So White Rabbit, Red Rabbit challenged that and actually invited the actors up on stage, or the audience up on stage and made them interact with the show. And then for my second project, it's about creating community for future entrepreneurs. Like, you know, it's, creating that guidebook will allow people kind of a place to start. Again, something that I wish I had. And so hopefully by creating something like this, I don't really kind of develop a group of people who feel as though, you know, they have somewhere to go, someone, you know, resource list that they can look at. And then lastly, just kind of echoing Declan on the 24-Hour Theater Project, you know, it's really creating a community of people, having a shared experience. You know, a lot of these people we had worked with, some of them we've worked with for all four years, and some of them, you know, I've never met before. So it'll be interesting to kind of meet them and network with them and get to know them not just as colleagues, but as collaborators and peers, and hopefully friends, and kind of form that sense of community.
Thank you, I keep saying this, but again, really great answers from everyone. But anyways, question three, this question I'd like to ask Ian, Declan, Brianna, and Lindsay. The question is, do you feel you've gained useful experience and knowledge in your field as you work on these projects? Ian?
Well, if you couldn't tell, I'm not your traditional student, so I'm pretty old. I've been doing art a long time, but I feel like with every art project anybody does, you gain knowledge and experience. And that's just the nature of being an artist. Even if you've done it a thousand times, you're gonna learn something new on the thousand and one time. And if you're not, you're not pushing yourself. And I think pushing yourself is key to growing and expanding your knowledge. So, long story short, yes, absolutely.
I agree, thank you, that's great. Declan?
Yeah, I have to, I have to say that I totally agree. Like I think that if anyone believes that once they like finish school, or once they are, have been in the field for a certain amount of time, that their learning stops, I just think that's kind of a closed-minded view of the work. Like I even think like, people have told me all the time, like when they're a supervisor to an intern, there's so much you can learn from an intern, and there's so much the intern can learn from you. It's definitely not a one-sided relationship. So I feel like from my grant experiences, I've learned so much. And I've also just mostly learned more about myself than I even knew was there. Like I didn't realize that producing or this kind of career directionality was something that I wanted. I started college and was like, I'm gonna be an actor or a costumer. And then now what is the last? And then now what is the last thing I've done in the past year? I haven't picked up a needle to sew. I haven't acted or sang on a stage in over a year. Those aren't even like in my top three right now of what I want to do with my career and all of the applications that I'm sending out to jobs right now aren't really in that because I learned that through this experience of doing this producing work, what I really enjoy about the work is being able to support the work and support the artists rather than me being the primary artist myself. And so I have learned a lot about myself and about how to go about doing this work successfully. Um, from the financial aspect, the budgets, and I've just really learned what I'm, what I'm good at, to be honest. Yeah.
Thank you. Uh, Brianna?
Um, yeah, I agree. When I first wrote the grant last year, it was my first year as president of BSU and like I didn't know what I was doing, like there was no you know, steps for me to, you know, be in my presidency. So I felt like, I'm just writing this grant. I hope I can go. I hope people like it. But I feel like from writing that grant, I've definitely um, learned more about like my blackness and more about you know, the black community in general and how to amplify my own voice. So I feel like once that trip happens, you know, I'll definitely be more like definitely be in the mindset of taking in the museum and um, honestly just enjoying the experience as a whole. And in terms of the next project I'm working on, I feel like I've always wanted to publish a book, didn't matter what it was. And I feel like the times I wanted to do it, um, even though writing is writing, I look back and I'm like the writing I've done is so like juvenile, like it's like, oh, blah, blah, blah. But I feel like what I've done now is very raw and it's very me and it's very emotional. And it is scary to think about that, like people are gonna read it, but I think right, like in this process, it's letting me um, like want to do it. Like I'm excited you know, to put my feelings on these pages and share my story. So I think it's definitely opened me up to becoming like who I really am as a person, so.
I love that. Thank you. Uh, Lindsay?
I think Brianna brings up a good point of um, it's, you know, a lot, a lot of us are going into these projects very kind of unexperienced. And that's, that's totally okay. Um, when I did White Rabbit, Red Rabbit, I never produced a thing in my life, but I thought that producing was something that I really wanted to do. So I took on the project because I didn't know anything about it. Um, and from that process, I learned what it means to be a producer, what the job is and kind of what it takes. And at that time, it was a solo producer. So I learned so much from that project, but then when I did the APAM class um, grant for the twenty-four hour theater uh, program or theater festival with Declan, that was a whole other learning experience. You know, I've never been a producer collaborating with another producer and having to manage a whole team. That was also a new experience. Um so I think that each thing that you take on allows you to grow more and more. Um, so yeah, I think that, that kind of sums it up.
Thank you. That was perfect. And thank you, everyone, again. Uh, this next question I'd like to direct for uh, Declan, Ian and Destiny. Uh, the question is, what has been the most fulfilling part of working on slash finishing your mini grant project? Declan?
Um, I think that the most fulfilling thing for me with Nervosa was like the reaction of the campus. I, or, or even outside the campus. Like I was getting texts from people from high school that I hadn't talked to in like five years, being like, I saw this post of something that has your name associated to it. I'm assuming that you produced it. And they were like, it was beautiful. And I, I just was like how are you? Like my first response was like, how are you? I haven't heard from you in like five years, but also like, thank you so much. Like I just was really it, it wasn't the praise or anything. I was just so glad that people were being impacted by it. Like I just it was really rewarding to know that people were hearing the message, getting the message, it was coming across and that it was it was affecting people in such a wide scope. Like I think that they had said at the time, like one of my friends was working on the, the Facebook profile that um, posted it originally. It was like the highest um like seen post on that profile in like the three years the profile had been created. And so it was great to see that it was getting such a large scale impact across the community and that so many people were sharing it and commenting and responding to it. Um, and I think in the APAM project right now, the most rewarding thing is just not only learning so much about myself, but being able to work with so many people I haven't worked with before and also the people I have worked with in so many different capacities, because there's such a great aspect of trust in the work that we're doing with each other. We're trusting everyone to kind of fulfill their own duties in their own area of the class. But it's, we're all in it because we love the work and we know it's gonna be such a great process for everyone involved, especially the participants once they come in. And so I think it's gonna be really rewarding to see everyone really enjoying themselves.
Thank you. That's perfect. Um, Ian?
I would say uh, the most rewarding, fulfilling, uh, seeing the sculptures up on the podiums in Bowman and the library and and hopefully raising awareness in the community uh, is fulfilling enough, but on a selfish, selfish kind of note, I guess other students coming up to me in the following weeks and being like, dude, you made those sculptures. That's beep beep, awesome, man. Those are so cool. That, that just makes me like awesome. So I think that was probably the most fulfilling moments there.
Thank you. Uh, Destiny?
Um, one of the most fulfilling parts for me is actually seeing all the submissions come through for EVC. And it's just like, I, this was my whole like project and I was so excited to do it, but once I actually was able to read through the submissions and see what people submitted, it got me even more excited. Because I'm like, oh, these people are just as passionate as I thought they would be.
All right. Great answers, everyone, as usual. Uh, this next question. Uh, I think it'd be good for everyone to answer it. I know Kira and Kennedy, you guys kind of already talked about this. You can decide if you want to talk about it again or not. But the question is, has COVID affected your project? If so, how? So we'll just go through the same order. Ian?
Uh, I think, you know, COVID's probably affected everything. Um, and it's given me the opportunity to work more at home. So I've been able to spend more time working on my art. Um, as for the sculptures, you know, I said they got up on the podium there and I was all proud and then we had to shut down a week and a half, two weeks later. So that, that kind of affected me, but but you know, they're still up there for future students to see over the summer when they come visit. So, you know, keep marching on.
Yeah. Brianna?
Um, definitely. Uh, I am fortunate enough that I've been to the museum, I believe twice. So like, I know the experience. I've been there. I've seen it. But I feel like it was very discouraging to know that people who haven't gone and were excited to know that, you know, the grant was there, like we had the funding. And they'd never been, couldn't be able to go. It was very like heartbreaking. And I know that the experience would have been different for me if I was experiencing it with, you know, the black community on campus and also our allies. So definitely COVID hindered that experience, so.
Thank you. Uh, Declan?
Yeah, um, COVID definitely impacted my first project, um, Nervosa, because we were on a pretty ambitious timeline. Um, we were kind of like a a two-month turnaround between getting all of like the ideas kind of set in stone and receiving the grant to then um, doing all of the photo shoots, getting all of the costuming done for all of it, the makeup done for all of it. And then getting everything posted on social media. Um, we had gotten the first like promotional photo is what we were kind of calling it up, which was the main kind of uh, title photo for the whole series. And that got such a great reception that we were all so excited to do the final set of photo shoot. And it was gonna be like a, a five-part conceptual series. And we actually got sent home from campus two days before our last photo shoot. And so we were very close to being able to, to finish it. And I'm very glad for the, the point that we were at. Um, that we got there and we were able to make that impact. And it was, it was really, really important for all of us that we got that, um, especially during the National Eating Disorder Awareness Week. Um, but it was a little discouraging that we didn't get to go as far as we wanted with it, but I think that the ultimate goal and objective got across. It just really grew some awareness. Um, in terms of the twenty-four hour theater festival, I'll throw it to Lindsay to kind of talk about that a little bit.
Lindsay, do you want to talk about that? We'll just go to you.
Yeah, um, so for the twenty-four hour theater festival, um, we did originally plan to have it virtual, um, uh, thank God because um, nothing really changed. Um, the only thing that had changed was, um, you know, how we were getting food to people and how we were um, gonna connect as a APAM class team. Um, and so we actually have a very dedicated group of individuals who stayed in North Adams, um, not for the project, but you know, who were there, living there in general. And um, they have donated their time to help us, you know, continue some of this in-person work. Um, so that's been really great. And then uh, for my Feigenbaum Scholars Grant, we actually um, you know, for that, that was also supposed to be, I was in, I was looking for that to be in person. Um, to travel to these organizations and meet the staff, meet the community. Um, and, and understand what their, what their essence was like. Um, but because of COVID, I had to you know, change out my travel expenses for um, expect, you know, um, budgeting for um a publication rather than, you know, going there. Um, and so I think though, that could be, that will be to my benefit because the publication will be able to reach so much more, so many more people and have a far greater impact than, you know, just a presentation at the URC conference. Um, I think that in the end, that it ended up working out for me.
Great. Thank you, Lindsay. Uh, Kira and Kennedy, would you guys like to add anything or do you feel good?
Um, I would just add that even though um, COVID hindered a lot of what we could do and especially like I came back to campus and Kira did not, so we couldn't really collaborate on the project from a distance either, but I think we decided to, you know, take this opportunity to, you know, go over ideas and solidify uh, pieces of it that we wouldn't have, we would have probably rushed into. And we decided to add like, like the video that Kira made, we want to add more of that into our final project. Um just to incorporate, um, you know, what's going on in the community as far as COVID. And we want to be totally transparent with like how it's hindered our process.
Yeah, I think if anything, COVID happening could make this a bigger and more profound project. Because now we have to, it would be dishonest to not and to show like how this personally affected us. Like how COVID has affected every single person on the planet and how much more this project means to us. Because it's sort of a connection to the things and the life we had before everything happened. And I think we're in a weird way, we're better off um, with experiencing COVID and like, obviously it was mishandled, but like we're better off knowing that life isn't guaranteed and that we should really not take anything for granted.
I love that. Thank you both and thank you, everyone. Uh, this next question, it's another question that I, I think it'd be good to ask everyone. Uh, it's, is there any advice you'd like to give students tuning in who might want to apply for a grant in the future? So Ian, if you want to start us off?
Uh, my advice would be to just do it. I mean, simple as that. It's very easy. It's not a hard process. Everyone is in place to help and support. Uh, you make a mistake, they're like, hey, this is what we can do and, and get it done. Um, I didn't even know they had the grants out there until I was in a class where the teacher was talking about it and it was just, couldn't have been easier. So I would just say, just do it. Don't come up with excuses, just get it done.
Thank you. Brianna?
Yeah, I agree. I feel like if you have something that you're very passionate about and something that you want to do, then definitely apply for a grant. I feel like you gain some real world experiences working on your project and you feel like it's rewarding to know that you've accomplished something, something that's your own. And I do think, you know, if you have that idea, definitely cultivate it.
Thank you. Destiny?
My advice was, is to make sure that you want to do something for the grant that you actually want to do, not what people are telling you like you should do. Because if you listen to other people's like opinions, like, oh, I think you should do this direction. Sometimes it's helpful, but then sometimes it'll feel more like a job than actually having like fun with the grant. So make sure like you're passionate about whatever idea you are and don't be afraid to ask for help.
That's great. Thank you. Um, Declan?
Yeah, I think what I would say um, about the asking for help as well is um, just make sure you're, you're having people review your work and review the, the writing of the grant before, because once you kind of pass that hump of the grant application and um, submitting it, uh, as soon as you get the funding, you like, you're, you have the funding, like that is something that is already in your in your lap, like you do have to like report back to say like how you're using the funding and ensuring you're using it in the right way. But um, I think just like get as many eyes as you can of like your mentors or your colleagues, peers to read this grant and um, even ask for help. Um, like, like Ian was saying, like I know like Erica is all the time saying like if people want to um, ask her for help in writing, she's not the one who reviews the grants and decides if they get rewarded. So she absolutely is open and happy to, to give critique and to help. Uh, I know that in my job at the institute, I'm also happy to give critique and help. Um, and stuff like that. So I think that just getting other people's eyes on it is really, really important to making sure you're making the most impact.
Thank you. Kennedy and Kira?
I think um, I agree with everyone. I would say go for it. And I think that the whole process, you know, even the application is a learning experience, like um, writing a grant application is something I wouldn't have done and I never had done, but um, I'm really grateful that I've gotten the experience to do all of this. And I think it's a great experience to take with me when I leave MCLA.
Yeah, I think there's honestly not much to lose from just putting yourself out there in this capacity and I'm assuming that if you even are thinking about applying for it, you have something that this grant money would really, really help with, some ideas, some vision. It's just some concept, like it's I, I think even if you don't get accepted, it's better off that you tried, because that regret would honestly suck. And it's, it's a really great opportunity.
Thank you. Lindsay?
Yeah, kind of, what everyone else has said, absolutely apply. Um, it is great experience. And, and this is the time, like in your undergrad, this is the time to kind of experiment with what you want to do. And this, there the school is giving you outlets to explore. Um, you know, by applying, you, doesn't hurt, you know, to apply. And then if you do get it, you have a great, you know, resume builder. If you don't get it, that's okay. You can always try again. But you also had the experience of applying for a grant. Um, and just by taking that risk, you know that you can do that time and time again. Um, so yeah.
Thank you. The, all very good answers. I have one more question to ask before we kind of open it up to everyone. So if you guys want to start thinking about any questions you have in the audience. But anyways, this last question I'd like to ask Ian, Declan, Kira and Kennedy and Lindsay. Question is, what impact has the funding been in regards to being able to successfully achieve the goals of your mini grant project? So Ian?
Well, uh, for the funding, I would say um, art can be expensive. Um, I guess everything can be expensive, but having that extra money to help offset um, the costs of buying the materials, I mean clays and sculpting mediums and paints and all of it, it racks up really quickly. And during this time where we're all going to classes and trying to juggle classes and COVID and trying to squeeze in a little bit of work right there, it just financially eases the burden a little bit to uh, help you push through and get your project done.
Thank you. Uh, Declan?
Yeah, I think um, the funding, uh, like Ian said, it helps you to, to do the creative aspect and not have to take on the financial burden yourself into like your own pocket. But I also think that the funding really allowed me to talk the talk and walk the walk. Like I had worked as an unpaid intern prior to this, this um, grant experience. And through that experience, I was so grateful for the experience, but I also learned that like, that's not something that someone should have to do. They shouldn't have to work for free because they feel like it's a great portfolio builder. And so that's something that I've constantly been trying to input into all of my work as I move forward. Um, academically and professionally. And so I was able to walk that walk of um making sure that my people were compensated, even though they're students, like Kira was serving as like a professional photographer for me. There's no reason he should have to do that for free, just because this is a school project. Um, there's no reason he should have to do that for free, just because this is gonna be a great resume builder for him. I don't believe in, in resume builders as monetary value, because that listing on my resume is not gonna pay my bills at the end of the day. And so this really allowed me to ensure that I was doing the people I was working with justice and allowing them to have that fair compensation that they deserve as professional talented artists in this field. And so that is, it's just been instrumental to me as an artist and as a advocate.
Well said. Thank you. Uh, Kira and Kennedy?
Um, I, yeah, Declan gave a really great point. Like it's, it's great to have the opportunity to work with a lot of creatives and to have that experience, but at the end of the day, we do live in a society where like you need, you need to be able to pay your bills and you be able to buy groceries. And so you don't always have the money to fund your art. And I feel like art is often overlooked and it's actually an extremely important part of everyone's daily life. If you're not indulging in work or responsibilities, you're probably indulging in some type of media art or consuming some type of thing to just distract you or just enjoy your day differently. or just enjoy your day differently.
I think, um, you know, funding and money isn't everything, but it is a lot of things sadly. And, you know, you can have all these great ideas, but, I mean, personally, and I probably can speak for everyone else, I don't have hundreds of dollars or thousands of dollars to go spend on a passion project sadly. And I think that, um, the funding just gives it the extra push it needs to take it to the next level.
Thank you. Lindsay?
Yeah, exactly what everyone else has said, and I think it provides access. I know for us, we were trying to serve 13 participants, um, you know, for this project, for the 24-hour Theater Festival. And to make sure that all of them had the same lighting equipment and the same sound equipment and that nobody was gonna be left out of not having them or, um, you know, being home and not having access to that. It was so important that we made that, you know, standard for everyone and making sure that, you know, we had per diems and we had, um, food access, so that people didn't feel like they couldn't eat for the full 24 hours. So I think that funding really makes it, you know, universal for everyone, um, to make sure that everyone has the same thing.
Thank you. Really great answers there. Um, we have about eight minutes left. So I think for the final eight minutes, I, uh, if we could have a brainstorming session where if anybody has questions about how to create a project, how to submit grants, or, or anything like that, just open it up to the audience. You can leave it in the comments. You could unmute yourself and ask. So, yeah. Just give it a, a, a few moments, I guess. So we have a, a question from Lisa. It says, what are the grant criteria? So if anybody like feels like they have a really good answer.
So I actually just edited the grant criteria the other day, so, um, I can answer this. It, it, uh, very closely resembles what a grant would ask you for in, um, I hate to say the real world, because this is the real world, but in like, um, the larger scale, like if you're applying for a project outside of academia, um, it wants you to give a project narrative. It wants you to outline what, um, the need in the community is for. So like, why is this important to the community? How will it benefit the community? Um, and it's gonna ask you for like a timeline, um, how, like, what kind of timeline you're working on? Like, do you hope this to launch in three months, or do you hope it to launch in two years? Like, what is that timeline? Um, and can we see that funding getting, um, in, uh, happening for that? Uh, it's gonna ask you for a budget of how the breakdown of the funds goes, because with grant funders, um, in, in like the larger scope outside of academia, they are gonna want to know that you are gonna put the money to the right places and that they are gonna trust that you're gonna put that. And so as long as you're giving a really descriptive budget, they're gonna get that. And then kind of evaluation and objectives, like, what are the goals? And how are you gonna show that you've achieved those goals are, um, really instrumental to the application?
Thank you. That's great. If any, I guess we'll wait a few more mo- moments to see if anybody else has any other questions.
Also, could I add something to what Declan just said?
Yeah, of course.
Um, he's so right, in the sense that you need to be very clear and concise, like what exactly you feel, like what purpose this art would serve in the community and how it would get people involved. Because I think at the end of the day, the grant project is not really, it's not very self-serving. It's to motivate others to see what you were able to do with the budget the grant gave to you. And like, it's supposed to motivate and inspire others, so. And also you need to have like a really good, uh, financial itinerary. Like, you need, they need to know exactly like what that money is going to.
Any other questions from the audience? Well, I feel like this has been very productive. I feel like I, there's a lot to take away from this. So with that being said, I would just like to thank all the panelists again. You've all had great answers. It's been a pleasure hearing from all of you. And if anybody doesn't, if nobody has anything else to say, oh, here we go. Next deadline from Lisa. Does anybody know the answer to this?
Um, the next deadline for the grant applications is, um, there was a deadline that just passed for, um, projects that were planning to launch for this semester, but there is an early action deadline, um, for projects that are gonna launch in the spring. That is in about a week. And then after that, the deadlines will open up again at the end of the, um, summer for fall projects to launch. Yeah.
Thank you.
Also, thank you, Drew.
I try.
Absolutely. Thank you, everyone. It was, I've worked with all of you on your projects, but it's so, so wonderful to see and hear about it in this way. And I, I really hope that those who are tuning in, um, take what they've heard today and move forward with it.
Thank you guys for all the help and assistance and support. It's been great.
It's a lot of fun. I love walking into Bowman and seeing the sculptures.
I think what I'll add to what Erica said too, um, is, uh, I noticed that in the audience, we have quite a bit of faculty as well. If I hadn't have heard about this in my class experience, uh, when I was taking Community Arts and Education with Lisa Donovan, I would never have applied for this project. So I think it's so important for faculty to facilitate the experiences for students to have this, uh, grant project. So if you can write it into your curriculum in any way, or if there's a way you can encourage it as part of your curriculum, it's a great supplementary method to advanced experiential learning that moves beyond the classroom. So I, I'll just leave that as well.
I will pop the link to our mini-grant information in the chat.
So the link's in the, go ahead.
Oh, just gonna say thank you. We're wrapping up. And if you don't have plans to go to another session, there's a really cool artist talk at 2:45. Uh, that'll feature, uh, Andrew and Ian, Andrew, Drew.
Like, who's that?
Yeah, so I will also put that link in the chat.
So I'll see you all in a minute.
Yeah.
Yes. See you soon, Ian.
Bye, everyone.
Thanks, everybody. That was great.
Thanks for coming, everybody.
Thank you.
Bye. Thank you.